You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of ABK Media Group. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County. Every day at 9:00 AM. Southern living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, and welcome to another additional Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Happy hump day everybody, hope you started out your day well, hope you're still having a great day. I know it's still very early for some of you, some of you are just getting to the office. Some of you are still in traffic unfortunately, and some of you are at home with the children. So to all of you, I say good morning and happy Wednesday. Beautiful day here in Gwinnett right now, the temperature is around 57 degrees, expected high of 77, which is another beautiful day. It was so beautiful. I gotta tell you a quick story, so normally I just go, when I wake up, I do my prayer meditation. And I come, I get dressed and I go, I go straight to the office and I start working. And then I eat breakfast after I do the show because the show, I started the show so early till I'm not ready to eat yet. So I eat after I do the show, but yesterday morning I got up really, really early. And I went and I sat on the deck because it was just a beautiful morning. I just felt like I needed to be one with nature at the time. So my uncle, who lives with me, he gets up every morning, he makes his coffee and he's very old fashioned, right? So he puts a kettle on the stove and he boils the water to make the coffee. You know, everybody else is kind of throw it in the microwave, not him. He boils his water, so he'll put the, he'll put the kettle on the stove in the morning. He boils his water while the water, water is boiling. He goes out on the deck and he sits on the deck. So yesterday morning, it was early, so yesterday morning, and I normally don't go out on the deck early in the morning, right? But yesterday morning, I felt the need to just go and just be one with nature and sit on the deck for a minute. And it was early, so he opened the door, he said, "You scared me?" He's like, he said, "I looked and said, 'What is she doing out there? She's smoking a cigarette now.'" I don't smoke, so that was really funny to me. I just wanted to share that story with you, but I thought that was really funny. But it was just a beautiful day. I felt like I needed to get out the house. I wanted to go out and just spend a moment with nature, you know? I think we should all do that every now and then. And you know what? I had a great day, like it was just so beautiful and then the weather was so, was so nice. And I just had a good day, all day yesterday, you know? So I just wanted to share it with you. So listen, I'm gonna jump into our horoscopes for today brought to us by astrologer Michael Theis. He is our residential astrologer bringing us the daily horoscope. And we're gonna kick it off with Aries. So Aries, we're gonna jump right in for your day. And this is for today, May the, uh, May the 15th. So your horoscope for today, May 15th. Aries, confusion can result when communicating with others. Travel will result in romantic attractions. You can take advantage of opportunities if you are quick to make a move. Don't drag your feet on, don't drag your feet, Aries. Make some moves, make some decisions, so you can take advantage of these great opportunities that are coming your way today. Taurus, you can make sound financial investments if you act fast. They go another one, you gotta act fast, Taurus, that's what Aries has to do too. Organize your day well if you wish to accomplish all you set out to do. Look into alternatives that would better suit both your needs. Not just your needs, Taurus, but the both of you, meaning probably your, your mate, your spouse. Gemini, try, try and avoid getting involved in idle chatter or gossip. That might get you into trouble. The stamina you possess will be apparent in your approach to your hobbies and creative projects. Resistance leading to conflict will only make it twice as hard to turn the situation around. Don't gossip and don't get into conflict that's gonna cause you problems later on down the line today. Gemini, stay away from all the nonsense. That's what they're saying, that's what Michael is saying to you. Cancer, don't press your luck with loved ones. Your best gains will come through helping others emotionally. Your lover may cost you financially. Cancer, don't let your lover cost you financially. Keep your money to yourself, watch out. That's all I got to say. Leo, try to be there for someone if, if they need assistance. You won't be well received by superiors or by your spouse. Oh, that's terrible, sorry about that Leo. A new relationship can be yours if you get out with friends. Okay, so you won't be well received by your spouse, but you could form a new relationship, but you gotta go out, you gotta get outside of the house, Leo, you gotta go out, you gotta do something, go somewhere. Virgo, travel will be favorable. You can gain knowledge from dealing with foreigners. Try not to upset others with your plans. Your ability to come up with good solutions for problems related to work would no doubt help you in getting a promotion. So if you wanna, you know, if you wanna get that promotion, Virgo, be a problem solver. That's, that's normally how people get promotions. They are problem solvers, they find a problem, they put a solution to it, and you can get the promotion. Listen, I'm gonna go to a song and I'll be right back to continue bringing the Horoscopes by Michael Theis for the, for May 15th.
I should catch up on my reading. I should catch up on my eating, yeah. But it's hard to keep the thoughts straight with you all up in my face. Trying to get you off my mind, but why should I when you're all I really like, yeah? I feel higher than a mountain, all because of you. You and I were so sweet, so sweet. Talking till we asleep, asleep. Every night I fall deep, fall deep, love, yeah. Cause you really get me, get me. Make me fall to my knees, my knees. Every night I fall deep, fall deep, love.
Hey, hey, welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily Horoscopes brought to you by astrologer Michael Theis. And we're gonna pick it up at Libra. Changes will not be easy for youngsters involved. You will learn a great deal from the foreigners you meet. You can meet potential new mates if you go out with friends and take pleasures, and take pleasure trips. Okay, so there's another one talking about go out with some friends and meet some folks. All right, Scorpio, don't hesitate to be present. Nope. Don't hesitate to present your ideas. You may find it impossible to get the rest of your, the rest you require. Don't be too eager to cut those who have disappointed you from life, from your life. Um, yeah, okay, don't be too eager to cut those who have disappointed, disappointed you from your life. You know, it's kind of hard because when people upset you and disappoint you and, you know, do things to hurt you, it's kind of hard to like keep me, well, I'm, I'm not gonna say that. It's hard for some people. It's, it's hard, let me say this, it's hard for me. So I, I, I might not cut you completely, but I will cut you back. I will cut you back, trust me. Okay, Sagittarius, don't cause a scene, but when, don't cause a scene, but when you get home, let partner, let your partner know how you feeling, why. You are best to work at home clearing up over the projects. Don't offer to pay others. When you get home, let your partner know why, how you feeling, why. Don't sit there and hold it in, they can't read your mind. They not gonna know what's wrong with you walking around pouting. So just let them know how you feel, Sagittarius, and why you feel that way. Capricorn, take a close, take a close look at contracts you've signed in order to be sure exactly where you stand. Opportunities to pamper yourself may unfold. Be honest in your communication and don't lose your cool if someone backs you into a corner. Pay attention to the, to the contracts, that's the, pay attention and do some little pampering for yourself, Capricorn. Watch them contracts though. Read the fine print, go all the way down to the bottom, because you know, we tend not to read full contract. We'll read some of it. And then we, we're so used to signing stuff, it's like, yeah, I know it says something that it really doesn't matter. And most of the time, a lot of stuff matters and it doesn't really matter to you until it's time for you to take, uh, have to do something with that contract. Like, well, I didn't know, that's because you didn't read to the bottom. All right, Aquarius, don't overreact if your partner has a poor attitude. You may interest some of them in a service you have to offer. Hmm. Your mate needs extra attention and is feeling rather insecure when you're not in sight. Your support and concern will help. Okay, Aquarius, I know how this can be sometimes. You probably thinking, man, I don't have time for that, but make time because if you don't pamper him and show him some attention, or her some attention, somebody else will. So just wanna throw that out there. My fellow fish Pisces, renovation to your domestic scene will pay high rewards. You can make amends by taking them somewhere special. You are best to stay, you are best not to say too much to colleagues. Keep your mouth shut, don't say too much. Go ahead on with yourself, we tend to run our mouths too much. All right, we're into the part of the segment now, part of the show where I like to do people helping people. This is the part of the show where I talk about a nonprofit in an area that's doing something good in our community. These people work tirelessly to do a lot of things that we don't get a chance to do because we're doing something else. But it, they have made it their purpose and their mission to support our communities by providing different types of services. And today, my shout out goes out to Families for Families, and they are a nonprofit agency that help, uh, help you become a foster parent or adoptive parent or respite family for children and families who are in need. They can use volunteers, they can use donations, of course. You can volunteer as a church partner. They have a lot of opportunities for you to get involved, they provide training. I don't know about, um, I might have told this story before because I say, so, so many of the nonprofits that I talk about, they pretty much do a lot of the same things, but I just wanna, you know, I like to shed the light on those that are, you know, in the community. Cause even though they do a lot of the same things, they may not be in the same area. But I'm gonna tell you a quick story about, um, my mother. Now, we were gonna, we were, we were gonna become, um, foster care parents, right? And so I know me, I'm not, I'm not, I have one child, let me say that. I have one child, um, and it's so funny because my child just had a child and she says she's only having one. Um, but I kind of knew that I wouldn't be a good foster parent, right? Because I don't have a lot of patience and you have to have a lot of patience because remember, you're dealing with children who are delicate. They've come to, come out of some bad situations most of the time. That's why they're in foster care in the beginning. Um, or in an orphanage, they've come out of some really tough situations and you need to be caring and patient and all that good stuff. Now, I'm caring and I'm loving, but patience is one of my, um, one of the things that I'm working on. Let me just say that, because I am working on that because I realized that I want things to happen right now. They're not gonna happen right now. Um, when you're dealing with children, you wanna make sure that you have patience and understanding to sit down and, and listen to what they have to say. Now, I think I did a pretty good job with my daughter, but I don't think I have patience for more than one child. So you need, you need that training, you need to know what's involved when you sign up for these things. Because the worst thing to do is to take a child from a system and put them into a, a worse situation that they came out of, you know? And, and that's because, you know, you're not patient. But anyway, my mom wanted to be a foster parent, so my mom is a great mom and she is a mom to my brother now, but she's also a mom to my friends, to, to rest of family members. She's just like a mom to everybody. And so my mom was working at the youth detention center in Newark, um, SS County Youth Detention Center, where she got it, she came across a lot of kids who were in detention, one, two, three, four times. And she, you know, she had a chance to talk to these kids and say, "Listen, what you keep coming in here for?" And I remember this one kid she talked to, and she talked about him a lot. He actually liked my daughter. And, uh, he said to her, you know, everybody called my mom Mama Bell. He said, "Mama Bell, I come in here because I have to help my grandmother." You know, and he was selling drugs, you know, but he did that to help his grandmother, you know? And my mother have, she has a heart for people. And so she decided that, you know what, we need to take some of these kids in and help them, you know, um, because they need help. And I said, "Okay, well, I'll go with you, but you know, I'm not the perfect person for this, you know? But I'll go with you to this training." So we went to the first training and they were very open about what was, what it entailed. And it was a lot and, and you know, from that training, you know, I was like, I, I, I can't do this. Like, you know, this, this is not something I can commit to. And I told my mother, and, and even though she wanted to do it, she needed some help. I, I wasn't the one, you know? So they need your help, right? They need your help. If you can't donate your, your time, you know, you could donate money. For more information about how to help Families for Families, and I shared that story because I need you to have a realistic expectation of what's involved. It's not an easy job, it's not an easy thing to do and it requires a lot. And if you're gonna make that type of commitment to these children, you wanna make sure that it's a, it's a full commitment because it's a lot, you know, and they need your help, but they don't need your help if you're gonna be short with them. You know, if you're gonna be tired and don't wanna do things with them. Children need love and nurturing and they need patience and understanding and they need a good person to listen to them. Cause they don't feel like we listen to them. That's one of the things I know for a fact from having my own child. And we probably don't because we're so busy trying to take care of the family. We're so busy trying to make ends meet and, you know, go to work and, you know, do all these things. So we probably are not listening to them the way they need us to listen to them. So I just shared that with you, just let you know, they need your help, but figure out how you can help them. It may not be becoming a foster parent, it may not be becoming an adoptive parent. It may not even be becoming a, becoming a respite family. But however you can help, you may be able to, you know, volunteer a couple of hours a week or something, or just donate some money or food or whatever it is they're needing. Anyway, for more information on how to help them, you can go to families, the number four, families.cc. Again, that's families for families.cc, and that's families for, the number four, families.cc. Or you can give them a call at 770-462-3405. Again, that number 770-462-3405. And they're located at 3915 Harrison Road, Suite 500 in Loganville. Again, the address is 3915 Harrison Road, Suite 500 in Loganville. So go ahead, if you can help them, by all means do, just make sure there's something you can do. Listen, I'm gonna go to a song, I'll be right back to bring you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County, right here on Gwinnett, Good Morning Gwinnett. Hold on, I'll be right back. Welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney giving you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Well, it's apparent that Gwinnett Chairman Charlotte Nash would not be running for reelection in 2020. I had, I had dinner with Charlotte last month and I asked her, "Are you gonna run?" And she said, "You know, it's something that my husband and I are discussing right now." So apparently they, they, they decided that it was not time for her to run again. So, um, Gwinnett County Commissioner, Chairwoman Charlotte Nash would not seek reelection 20 decision, 2020, a decision that could have significance on already shifting political landscape in Georgia's most populous county. So she is not running. She says, "I believe that it's time for me to focus on my family and follow through on a promise I made to my husband, um, that, that we will enjoy our retirement together." I think that's great, you know? Um, she's been in that position for quite a long time, so, um, as a matter of fact, she's been in it for four decades. She says, "For four decades, I've enjoyed the opportunity to serve in one role or another, the place I've called home all my life. Um, I know that I have been fortunate in that to all those who have supported and helped me along the way." She said, "Thank you." You know, I, this is what I, she and I had a conversation and I thought it was really, um, when I think about legacy and she said to me, she said, "I live on," I think she said she lives on Hall Street, if I'm not mistaken. So Hall Street is a street that was named after her family because they owned all of that land and she still lives on the land. And I thought that was, you know, because I asked my mom before, I said, "You know, we didn't own anything." And so she said, um, "We did, but they took it from us," you know? And I think about legacies, like one of the things, my major thing right now is building the business that I could leave behind as a legacy for my, for my, for my granddaughter. And I don't know if my daughter's gonna have more children or not, but my grand, my, my daughter, my granddaughter, um, my nieces, nephews, and you know, their children, I wanna leave a legacy. I wanna be the person, because my family doesn't have a legacy. Like if they have one, I don't know about on either side, on my dad's side. And I really don't have, I don't even know people on my dad's side, really, which is kind of sad. I know my aunt and my cousin and my cousin's kids, but that's the extent of it. Like, you know, I know a few more cousins, um, but not a lot. You know, my dad, my dad, my grandfather had five brothers and sisters, so I know they all had children. So I only know, and the cousins I do know mostly are on my dad's mother's side and she was the only child, so. Um, but I think about what Charlotte said to me, she said, "I, I lived on the land that has been in my family my entire life and before I even got here." And that is a very long time. So she's done a lot here in Gwinnett County. Um, she's a, she's a native of Harbinger's area. She's worked in the Gwinnett County government for nearly three decades, serving in roles including Budget Director, Director of Financial Services, and then she retired from there in 2004. She was first elected to serve on Commission, as Commission Chair in 2011, um, special election, taking the reins amid the fallout from county bribery scandal. So there was a whole lot of scandal that was going on when she took that seat. And then she was reelected in 2012 and 2016. So now she's, you know, she decided to step down. And here's the thing, I was just with someone just last Thursday and he told me, he was, you know, thinking about running for that position. And I said, "Well, I talked to Charlotte and you know, I don't, I don't think she's stepping down." And he said, "Yeah, she says it every year, but I think she's gonna step down this year." So we, this is gonna be interesting, interesting to see, you know, who comes in to, um, take over her spot. There's a lot of people probably that's vying for it, like that's the second person I actually met. I met someone about two months ago, I was at an event, I was at, I was actually at the State of the County event. Um, and when I met this gentleman here and I was, it's so funny, both of the guys that I talked to, I was on a shuttle with them riding back to the parking lot. That's so funny. So the first guy I met was back in March, um, he was at the State of the County. He, we sat together on the shuttle coming back from the State of the County at the Infinite Energy Center. And he said to me, he was gonna run for, um, that seat. And I said, "Well, I don't think she's gonna, I don't think she's leaving." He's like, "Oh, we'll see." Last Thursday, I was on a shuttle, um, riding on a shuttle from doing a tour and the gentleman that was sitting next to me, who was an attorney, said to me the same thing. This, "My name is Kurt and I'm running for that position." And I said, "Oh, okay, but I don't, I don't know if she's gonna step down." So, but anyhow, things happen, so that's cool. But, um, it's gonna see, you know, we're gonna see, uh, what happens with that whole thing and, you know? Good luck, Charlotte, it was nice to meet you and have a chance to, uh, have dinner with you. Uh, you know, apparently a lot of people love you here in Gwinnett, um, you've done a lot of things. I've only been here a short period of time, so, you know, I did get a chance to talk to her. She was, you know, she was really cool and I, you know, she, you know, I've been following some of the things she's done. So good luck, enjoy your retirement, enjoy the husband because you know, you gotta give them that attention and, you know, I know, I know it's gonna be hard though. Like I can't imagine her like staying in retirement, doing absolutely nothing for very long because she doesn't put me, she doesn't, she doesn't seem like that type of person to me after getting a chance to sit and talk to her. Like me, I don't think I'll ever retire, like I just don't. Like I can't see myself not being an entrepreneur or author, doing some kind of venture or helping somebody launch something. I just, I just can't see it, like I don't know what I would do with myself. Um, listen, apparently there is a, a new solid waste transfer station that's trying to make his way into Gwinnett County. And some of the residents aren't happy, guys. I was reading the boards yesterday and they're just not happy. Um, they don't want this solid waste transfer station near their residence because they feel like it's gonna be a disgusting mess. And, um, but they, you know, there's a proposal that was put out. Proposal for the project at 878, 875 Azara Road near Loganville, where fit, were filed this month with Gwinnett County and the state. The project is significant enough to warrant consideration through Georgia Department of Community Affairs, Developments, um, of Regional Impact Program. The program allows agencies like the Atlanta Regional Commission to evaluate large scale projects um, that are likely to have a regional effect beyond the local government jurisdictions in which they are located. A lot of the people that, you know, that I, I was listening to yesterday on the boards, they, you know, they're not happy because they feel like it's just gonna be a pile of garbage there. And although they were saying something about there's gonna be a wall put up, but you gotta think though, if they're gonna come and pile, that, just the vision of that, when I think about that, can you imagine like behind your house, there's a wall and behind that wall is just a pile of garbage? Can you imagine all the different rodents? Oh my God, it just sounds so disgusting. And so I know that they're not happy because they're talking about it. I wouldn't be happy if it was coming to my residential neighborhood. And so I'm, I'm sure that they're gonna, they're gonna get some pushback about that. Um, the site proposed for the Azara Road Transfer Station is about a mile south of Triple Mill Park and a few miles north of Gwinnett's border with Walton County. Most of the property is question, in question, consists of trees and other undeveloped land. And on one side of the lot backs up to a quarry operated by Vulcan Materials. So, uh, I don't know, I don't know, guys. I mean, when it comes up, you guys gotta go out there and talk about it. You might wanna go out there and voice your opinion, but I don't, ugh, when I think about it, it makes my skin crawl. I, you know, I remember being a little girl in Albany, Georgia, and I remember the dump. We would, we would run over to the dump and it was just stuff just piled up at the dump. And the dump was not even far from my house. And, um, but it, you know, it wasn't in our backyards per se, it was a little bit away. You had to like kind of go up, go through some bushes and go up the hill, but still it was there. And so when I think about how it's just piled up, I remember when I was living in, in North Carolina. And so when we first moved to North Carolina, we moved to a little small town called Zeblin. And, um, they didn't pick up the garbage, so we had to put our garbage in the back of the truck and take it to the garbage site. Man, that was disgusting. I had never seen anything like that. And I was like, "What the heck? We gotta take the garbage to the, to the garbage site?" Man, that was gross. So I, mm, I don't know, guys, when it's time for you to voice your opinion, I say, "Get on out there and voice your opinion. Don't hold back, say what you mean, I mean what you say." But, um, if you don't voice your opinion, you know, things happen when you don't speak up. I'm gonna go to a song and I'm gonna come back and continue to give you the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. I, ugh, every, every time I think about that, it just make my skin crawl. Now, I'm sure that people are not gonna be able to open their back door and see this thing, you know? I'm, I'm sure that's not what it's gonna be, but just the thought that it's there is like, ew. You know, it sounds like ew, you know? And it's kind of funny because... You know, and it's kind of funny because I'm sitting here, my mouth is watering from gross, you know, it sound crazy. Don't, listen, don't pay me attention. I'm just, certain things just gross me out. And you know, to this day, I won't eat rice for a certain reason. Anyway, I digress and move forward. Be right back after this next song.
Hey, hey, welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm your girl Audrey Bell Kearney giving you a daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Sugar Hill invites the public out to learn about the new twenty-two park that they're gonna be building. Oh, it's gonna be, when I got down here, I saw the most beautiful parks I had ever seen in my life. And I, I wasn't used to seeing those, so I was, I was, you know, like, wow, these parks are so nice. Sugar Hill officials will conduct a public meeting to discuss a new twenty-two park at 5:00 PM on May the 20th at City Hall, located at 5039 West Broad Street. The meeting will allow the public to learn more about the park's concept, the schedule, and it as well as allow residents to provide input on the project element. So if you want to go out there and talk about what you want to see in this park, this is your opportunity. Um, Sugar Hill City Park at fifty-nine, fifty-four ninety-four Cummings Highway will serve as a trailhead to the Sugar Hill Greenway. The park will feature a lake in its center. Construction is planned to, to phase in over the next three years in order to stay within the budget. Wow, it's gonna have a lake right in the middle. It's gonna have a lake right in the middle. So listen, here's the thing, if you want to, if you want to say something, you want to add something, you got an opinion, you want to go up to City Hall on May 20th, located at 5039 West Broad Street, to the public meeting is open to the public to learn more about the park's concept, um, the schedule and the budget and, you know, give your input. They want your, they want your input, so that's why they're making this public. Don't sit back and wait till it's too late before you go and, you know, put your two cents in and now it's too late because you had the opportunity. This is, you know, I find that a lot of people do this. They want to get on board and they want to fuss about things. And when the opportunity comes up for them to actually go out and voice their opinion, don't show up. So I'm, I'm telling you, if you, you know, and this is probably gonna be beautiful, but if you, if you got some input about it, um, go ahead, um, you know, do that. Gwinnett Park built with the help of goats is now open to the public. Okay, so, "A park partially made possible by the herd of goats has opened in Norcross." Pinnacle Park, which broke ground in April 2018, officially opened on Monday with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. The park near Pinnacle Center Business Park and Brook Hollow Parkway is centered around a lake that used to function as a stormwater retention facility. The park features multiple amenities for visitors. There's a playground for kids, there's some walking trails, there's a fitness course, those looking to get their blood moving, a grand pavilion, a picnic pavilion, grills for events, traditional amenities like parking and restrooms are also available. And that sounds like another beautiful park. And it's just, it's open just in time for the summertime. Um, they're incredibly committed to providing more opportunities for the community to get outside and play. And they look forward to seeing residents around Brook Hollow out and about, enjoying the new space, said, um, Norcross Mayor Craig Newton. All right, so that sounds like a beautiful park. I love the parks. I told you guys, I went to, the first park I went to was Rose Jordan, right? When I first got here. I went to Rose Jordan Park and I, I went there because my nephew had come down for the summer and he wanted to go play basketball. And so I had to go and look up and say, "Okay, where can we find somewhere for him to go play basketball?" And so it pulled up Rose Jordan Park. And I went to Rose Jordan Park and I'm like, "This is a park?" So the park had a pool, a water slide, a lake, and it was beautiful. So my nephew, it had a basketball court, so my nephew loved it. And, um, he was able to play his ball. And I said to him, I said, "So are you good now?" He said, "Yes, I am." But then I started to look at all the other parks. So then I go over to Triple Mill Park and I'm like, "Man, this is a beautiful serene park here. Beautiful lakes. My husband went fishing there and I went with him. And we were like on like the little deck on the water. And I was like, "This is so beautiful, another beautiful park." And then recently, I had the opportunity to go to, um, T W Briscoe Park, um, over in Snellville and Lenora Park over in Snellville as well. Beautiful parks, like, so just beautiful parks. So get out, enjoy some nature, you know, it's beautiful. Um, Sugar Hill will be conducting a photo shoot to highlight the city's downtown and newly opened East Center and is seeking community members to interact with the downtown spaces. The photo shoot will focus on Sugar Hill's East Center, including the East Center Gym, the Eagle Theater, the East Center Promenade, um, and various downtown restaurants. So if you want to be a part of this photo shoot, they're looking for you. The city is not looking for classic models, but instead, we look for, we look to feature community members from all different ethnicities and ages. According to the city's website, the goal is to reflect a diverse community that makes Sugar Hill a great place to live, work, and play. So if you're interested in finding out more about how you can become a part of this, the, uh, photo shoot that's gonna be held for, um, Sugar Hill, they're doing a photo shoot casting call, so go to the city, www dot thecityofsugarhill dot com backslash photo hyphen shoot, hyphen casting, hyphen call. Cityofsugarhill dot com backslash photo hyphen shoot, hyphen casting, hyphen call. They're looking for you. Don't worry about if you're just an everyday person, because they're looking for the everyday person. You know, go on out, rep your city, show some love, be, get in the ads, so people can see who you are. You know, show them that you love your city. Listen, if you want to have coffee with the cop, you can do so today between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. Uh, meet with some of Gwinnett finest at the Coffee With The Cop, ask questions, voice your concerns, build relationships with the officers in your community. Refreshments will be served. It's gonna be located at Sweet Hut Bakery and Cafe located at 2180 Pleasant Hill Road in Duluth. Again, you can have coffee with the cop today from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You can go out there, you can ask your questions, voice your opinions, build some relationships, get to know these guys. You know, we, I know a lot of, I know a lot of cops get a lot of, get a bad rap. I know that, because there's just some crazy stuff that some cops do. But not all cops are bad. I have friends that are cops. They're not bad people, but some are. Now, don't get me wrong, some are. But I think, I think it's because the training, the diversity training, the, um, cultural sensitivity training needs to be heightened. I looked at a video yesterday, it was so sad. And I hate when people send me these videos and I should not have opened it. Um, it was a video of a young woman. I don't know what she had done, but she, she was, the cop was trying to, um, trying to get her under control. And she was like saying, you know, "Stop, you hurting me, you hurting me." And, you know, she was just being disruptive. He was trying to get her under control. I don't know what she had done. But anyway, he tased her and she fell to the ground. And she was saying to him, "You tased me, I'm pregnant, I'm pregnant," right? So she's saying that. And I, I think he, I think she kicked him or something, because he tased her and she, he shot her like three times with the gun. She was on the ground, laying on the ground. He shot her like three times. And I was like, "Oh my God." So I don't know if she died. It was, you know, it was something that someone passed around on Facebook. And I, and I try not to open that stuff because it's such a downer. But, you know, I say all that to say, some cops are just not trained properly. Some cops take that position with, with, with bad things in their heart. I know people who have become police officers who were just really easygoing and good people, but because they were in such a position as being a police officer and they had the heart in themselves, they turned into people that I hardly knew. You know, because they, they felt like, "I can't be this good soft person. I gotta be tough and rough." And so it's a lot, but listen, go on out today. Meet with cop, meet with some of the officers, get a chance to talk to them, build some relationships, because not all of them are bad. You know, not all, they just get a bad rap, some of them. And some of them are bad. Now, don't get me wrong. Not all of them are bad, but some are really bad. And the ones that are really bad are really bad. So listen, I'm gonna go to a song and I'm gonna come back and wrap it up, so you guys can be on your way and I will be on mine. Be right back after this next song.
Hey, welcome back to Good Morning Gwinnett. I'm your host Audrey Bell Kearney giving you a daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Tannery Row Artist Colony is celebrated its fifteenth anniversary today. So if you want to go out and celebrate with Tannery Row, they're gonna be celebrating fifteen years. That's exciting for them. There's gonna be lots of food and live entertainment and of course, a lot of art. So founded in 2003, the Tannery Row Artist Colony, um, known as Trac, is home to one of the south's largest collection of working artists, open studio under one roof. The founding artists and craftsmen, um, of Tannery Row Mercantile shared the vision and skill to make Tannery Row a stunning combination of studio and gallery space. Trac consists of seven hundred square feet of art gallery and fifteen artist studios that range anywhere from two hundred and twenty-five to five hundred square feet. Currently exist exhibitions consist of two biannual jewelry exhibitions held in the fall and the spring and two persons or solo exhibition and several group exhibitions. So listen, they're gonna be celebrating today at 12 o'clock. So if you want to go out and just have some fun and, you know, some good food and look at some beautiful art, you can. Um, their website is tanneryrowartistcolony dot net, tanneryrowartistcolony dot net. Or you can give them a call at four seven zero three two six 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 five six. Again, that number is four seven zero three two six 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 five six. And you can go on over there and have a great time, look at some beautiful art, talk to some artists. I wish I was an artist, you know, that's one of my dreams, guys. Um, Tannery Row is located at 554 West Main Street in Buford, Georgia. There is no fee for this event. It starts at 12 o'clock, so you got time to make it. Um, and it's gonna be food, lots of food and some beautiful art. And you get to meet some of the artists, which is really cool. I wish I was an artist. I always try to do something artistic with myself. You know, I'm just not, I, I'm not. And I've given up on being an artist. I haven't given, I haven't given up on art. I've given up on being an artiste. So that's my thing. Unwind at Chateau Elan. If you want to go out and do a wine tasting tonight, there is gonna be a wine tasting. It's back. Come out for fifteen dollar tasting happy hour. Fifteen percent off all wine in retail from five to seven. Um, you get six pre-selected tastings for fifteen dollars. You get ten percent off your dinner at Mark for unwind attendees. Um, you want to go out, that's tonight at 5:00 PM at Chateau Elan, located at 100 Rue Charlemagne, Rue Charlemagne, and that's in Brazelton, Georgia. 100 Rue Charlemagne in Brazelton, Georgia. That's Chateau Elan Winery and Resort. So if you want to go out for a happy hour tonight, guys, and get some, do some wine tastings, it's gonna be fifteen dollars. It starts at 5:00 PM. It's gonna be at Chateau Elan Wine, Winery and Resort, located at 100 Rue Charlemagne, um, and that's in Brazelton, Georgia. Have some fun this evening, get you a little bit of wine, fifteen dollars. I think that's cool, too. I'll have one cup and I'll probably be a little bit woozy. I'm, I'm a lightweight when it comes to drinking. Like I've always been a lightweight, so I don't hardly drink. I might drink a glass of wine, that whole glass of wine, um, the whole glass of wine, I'll be drinking it all night, which is kind of crazy, right? So listen, that's all I got for you today. I want to thank you so much for listening in and spending some time with me. You could have been anywhere in the world, but you decided to listen in on my show and I appreciate you and I say thank you. If you missed an episode, you can go over to goodmorninggwinnett dot com to check out past episodes. Or you can download the app to your mobile phone or mobile tablet, because we have apps in Android and iOS. You can also do that. You can listen to the latest episode if you have Alexa at home. So if you, you know, if you don't get a chance to listen to the full episode, you can listen to the latest episode. So if you missed part of this episode today, but you want to catch up on it, go listen to your, uh, your Alexa and say, "Hey Alexa, open Good Morning Gwinnett," and it's gonna play the, play the latest episode. I'm so excited about that. Uh, artificial intelligence is gonna be huge. It's huge already. It's gonna continue to be huge. Um, so listen, thank you again for listening. Share the show with your friends. I have an audacious goal to get to a million subscribers or a million downloads or a combination of both by the end of this year. I can do that with your help by you sharing the shows and subscribing to the shows and downloading episodes and all of that great stuff. You can also subscribe on iTunes if you listen that way, on Stitcher, on TuneIn. Um, if you go to goodmorninggwinnett dot com, you see all of the places, not all of them, that's a lot of the places, but we're still in a lot of places that I haven't listed yet and I need to do that, um, where you can listen to the show and share it with your friends.
Um, where you can listen to the show and share it with your friends. I thank you for being, um, being my ears today. I'll be back again tomorrow, but wait. But wait, I forgot, I almost forgot. I keep forgetting this. I wanna close out with something inspirational. Because I want you to, uh, continue to have a great day. So today's inspiration is happy thoughts make happy things happen. Let me say that again. Happy thoughts make happy things happen. So think happy thoughts today, y'all. Even when things go bad, even when people are getting on your nerve, even when you're tired. Think happy thoughts, so happy things can happen to you. God willing, I'll be back again tomorrow at eleven AM, because you know tomorrow's Thursday. I'll be back again tomorrow at eleven AM to bring you more about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. And also your daily horoscopes that will, that are always brought to you by astrologer Mike Athiason. Until next time, make it a great day. Bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in daily at nine AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you missed an episode, go to www-goodmorninggwinnett dot com to catch up. If you liked this episode, go ahead and subscribe to the show now and share it with your friends.